Good morning, we'd like to welcome you out to this study session of the Mesa City Council. It's a beautiful day. We'd like to begin first with a review of our tentative agenda for Monday. Everybody has it there. First items would be 1 through 3C. 3D through 4B. 4C through 4E. 4F and 4G. 4H and 4I. 6A through 6J. 6K through 7B. 7C through 7G. And then we have 8A through 10B. Mr. Kavanaugh.
On item 9A, actually for the tentative budget, one of the issues that as part of our budget discussions that we had deferred action on was a recommendation from the Community Cultural Development Committee about adding additional funds for human services from the general fund. As you recall, that was a unanimous recommendation from that committee, but in our earlier discussions, we, the full council, suggested that we defer it to be a decision point as part of the budget process. And I'm hoping that perhaps the other council members could weigh in this morning whether they will continue to support that so we can give some direction to staff on that question.
Wonderful. Mr. Brady, maybe you could give us an overview of what your ideas were along those lines and we can see some more council discussion.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, acknowledge the request that we talked about with the council. And we've, as we've discussed, we've tried to maintain the budget pretty close to what we've done last year for all the departments and for all activities there. We will be presenting to councils, we presented to councils, I think we've highlighted some of the changes that are in the budget, including staffing of school resource officers and a couple of other items. But the most significant issues in the budget from pressure points, the council will be approving here shortly, we have verbal agreement from both our representative employee groups, the pay plan for sworn police and fire. Obviously, that has a significant impact, incremental impact on the budget, so we'll be accommodating that. Today, we're set in our budget at right at the 8%, which is the policy of the council that's been established on the fund balance. In order to try to help address the concerns and recognizing there are a lot of needs in the community, need to provide extended service to those in need, one of the discussions I've had, and let me make sure I make this clear, this is separate from, there's an ongoing discussion about the ABC dollars and promoting that or branding that and trying to find a way to increase that. So that, this has really nothing to do with that. That's a separate discussion. But I've had a conversation from Dan Wollam, the president of the Mesa United Way, and discussed what other ways that we could provide some direct services, or at least the city could provide some direct services. And one of the options that's come up in that discussion is that the United Way stands ready and able to provide direct utility assistance to clients that are being assisted by agencies throughout the city. And so the proposal would be, as I discussed as recently as yesterday with Mr. Wollam, would be that the city would provide $60,000 to $70,000 available in utility vouchers for citizens, residents in Mesa, that the agencies, several agencies in the city could draw upon to use to provide assistance for clients. And so it'd be a direct benefit to Mesa residents. So I don't know that goes directly to this specific request, the 150, but it was a way to try to find a option that would provide some direct dollar assistance to individuals.
So, tell me again that number you said?
So, we, we really, we talked, we've talked about a range from $60,000 to $70,000. So, we kind of need, at some point, get direction from the council. So effectively, what that does is it doesn't allow, doesn't require us to have to actually even put dollars up, it's essentially a voucher that comes back. And so when the voucher comes back to the city, it just gets credited against an account. And one of the things that he suggested yesterday is that not only provide utility assistance, but there's a lot of our agencies that are helping families, individuals who have not been qualified to, for homeownership. And then, and they've been working through their qualifications and experience in getting their credit so that they can have ownership. But then when they come to the city and now have to put up a deposit for utility, sometimes that's a barrier, a financial barrier even to homeownership, and suggested that we create some standards of qualifications, that we could also apply these dollars towards a down payment for those who would be qualified or going through this type of service. So, that's an option to put out there if council would like to consider that also.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's one of the options. Feedback from the council members? Vice Mayor.
I want to echo Councilmember Kavanaugh's words. I do believe that we need to do something as a city, whatever that amount is, to put forth the effort. Even though Lyndon Johnson declared war on poverty almost 50 years ago, we still have poverty in our community, and I think the city does need to step up its efforts. And so I'm in favor of some type of monetary amount. I'm appreciative of the vouchers, but I don't think that goes far enough.
Okay. Councilwoman, sorry, Benelli, thank you. I saw a couple of hands and it threw me for a second.
Mr. Brady, is, are the vouchers only good for the service area where the city provides electricity?
Oh. Mayor, Councilwoman Benelli, no, it would be, would be provide for any city utility. So if they live outside the service area electric utility, they'd still be available most likely for water, wastewater, and gas.
Okay. Councilmember Luna.
I would also support the need to provide some additional funds to support the issues that we face in our community. I just started serving on the board and, you know, I wish we had millions and millions of dollars to give our community, but I think this is an initial start. I think that we need to look and see what's available that we can provide our community.
Councilmember Richards.
Can I get a better understanding of what the amount is that we're talking about?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, hundred and fifty thousand, additional requests, yeah.
We're going to have some kind of trade-off, so what's going if this comes?
Yeah.
That needs to be, because if the consensus is going to be that, you know, and I don't disagree that, yeah, there's great need in the community, but we're going to have to shave somewhere else in order to get this. There's no magic pot of money to be able to increase, so.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that in the slightest, but when you look in the whole scheme of a $1.3 billion budget, $150,000 is very, very miniscule in comparison. But if he wants to bring up, if the city manager wants to bring us options of where we need to cut it, I'm more than happy to make that decision.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, do we, I mean, are we going to make some suggestions? Instead of, you know, giving, let's give our council, our managers some direction.
Ideas. And that was where I was coming from, and I know there's others, I'll get right to you. And so we've looked at, all of us have probably requests and needs and ideas as long as our arm on things that need to be done. And the idea was originally in this, as I talked to Mr. Brady, to keep, you know, try and get this balanced budget forward, look at the options, not rule anything out, but at this point, come through with this balanced budget suggestion with these ideas of vouchers, which I thought was a great idea, to keep it close in the city. Instead of going to overhead and others, it actually gets to the folks. And then reevaluate it maybe in a few months and see how this economy is going forward. I know one of the big items also is trying to see what can be done for the city employees as far as looking at different pay ranges and other things there. So I know there's a lot of demand and pull, but Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I think the idea for the utility vouchers is a welcome addition to the way in which the city can partner with the community on these issues. The reason for the request in increasing human services funding is that over the years we've dramatically cut the city's general fund contribution to human services funding. And that, that funding in partnership with the agencies, it's a different concept than providing utility vouchers directly to individuals. We're partnering with agencies that run programs, many of which offset what we do in public safety services, in a much less costly way than we do with police and fire. And the additional money for human services can expand that range of partnerships with those agencies. Although I know our committee had recommended the $150,000 figure, I think I'm certainly willing to, to look at a lesser amount if that makes it easier. Perhaps there's a, you know, if we're doing a trade-off, it could be a slight adjustment to contingency funds that we have in the budget. That's just, I think there, I think there are ways and places to be able to do this, to send them out wedded to that particular figure, but it really, it's, it's an important, it's not only symbolic, it's realistic in terms of increasing the funds available to help the partner agencies, which I think directly helps our bottom line save money on police and fire costs.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brady.
Mayor, may I suggest just throw an alternative out here? I know, because I know that there's some council members that've talked to me in the past about their interest in having a direct service benefit in this category. So I think the 50,000, and we're kind of interested in seeing if this $50,000 voucher program, see what kind of response we get, see if it'd be beneficial. I think it would be helpful to be the city making a contribution to United Way for them to administer the program. I think that would be very helpful. We could, if the council would like us to look at, maybe putting the 50,000 in the voucher program, and maybe $100,000, then we could add to the human services funding. We would, what we would do in the budget is include it, obviously, we'd have to adjust something, either we'll have to reduce an expenditure, or we could just assume, you know, and Councilman Glover is correct, you know, move a little bit higher on our projected revenues. Now, the only, that works as long as revenues continue to come in. So I only, the only caveat I'd hold out, and it's, you know, it's not going to miss it by just 100,000, but we're, every year, we have to look at our budget and revenues coming in, and so, you know, we'll look in January and see how we're doing. But to start the year off, I mean, 100,000 isn't going to probably break it or whatever. So if we come up with a combination of approaches like that, it would, the 50,000 takes a little pressure off the general fund from the voucher standpoint, because it's really discrediting off of the receivables coming into the utility department. 100,000 would be a direct expense into the general fund.
What do you think, Mr. Kavanaugh?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay. You know, so maybe, you know, this is, we're reviewing for the budget coming Monday. If you have the, if you would, please take the opportunity and we'll visit and see what areas we need to cut back in, as Mr. Richards also suggested, and we'll kind of get through that. Okay, any other information along these lines? Okay, yes, Councilwoman.
I'm not sure who this question is for, but would we, I was, I participated in the, or I was in the audience when we had the discussions at the committee meetings and kind of where we drew the line with where we had funding for the agencies that were applying for human services funding. So would additional funding just kind of move that line down and with the way the applications were scored, is that how?
Is any here? Yeah, that's the way it does.
Okay. Isn't that what you talked about? That's CDBG.
Yeah, we did that with the CDBG funds, but the principal, the policy was that's how we would do it with human service or CDBG.
So I guess the only comment that I would have is if we're going to do the vouchers, then we might want to look and see if any of those agencies applied for funding to do that, and if it's not going to be necessary for them to support that program, then maybe that, obviously, I hate to say this out loud, but that that agency wouldn't get the, get funding to implement some kind of voucher program that they already do. I think Mesa Can does that, do you believe?
Mr. Brady, can I clarify? So what I'm assuming is 100,000 would go into the pot of the, currently, the human services funding, which I think is somewhere around a half million, 600,000 would add to that. So that process is already established. The voucher program is one we're proposing to be a separate, something we've not done before, where we would actually go and partner with Mesa United Way. And that way, then they could be the ones that would be distributing it from, the agencies essentially, I say, wouldn't even be distributing it, they would make it available and known to the agencies, then they would request, as they have clients come to them, they could then request, again, reimbursement for, or voucher credit towards utilities. And we need to work on this. I'm assured it can be done, we'll probably, we'll bring back the details to the council, but it's, it was just really a way through United Way to work with agencies who have direct contact with individuals. You know, they may have a lot of different needs, they may, whether it's food, shelter, but then the thinking is, well, if we could help them with utilities, then they could use those dollars, they would have had to pay the utility bill for food or shelter or something like that.
Which is an essential service, I like that idea.
Yeah, I think one of, some of the programs that are in human services are utility assistance programs through Mesa Can and some other things. I'm, what, just, I think the question is, is can the vouchers offset some of the cash in those areas instead of, instead of the cash assistance, which they would do to pay utilities, instead they would have the voucher program that they would access, which I like that concept much better, I think that's a good idea.
But, but. Council, just give me some time, maybe let's approve it, we'll, we'll write it up, bring it to the council and get into more detail, maybe have Mr. Wollam come here and also share with us his thoughts about how it would work too.
And Ms. Benelli, remind me again on the tentative budget and how that works.
Yeah, the tentative budget is, excuse me, is the top amount. So the council will be presented with a final budget at a later date. The final budget can be below the tentative budget, but cannot be above the tentative budget.
Wonderful. So this gives us the opportunity, now you have that direction, and then we work out the details.
I'm certain that our budget director's given us enough cushion for the $100,000. We'll be fine.
Wonderful. Well, good. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. If there's no other information on this item, we'll move on. Then we just had those remaining items, 10A and 10B. Was there any concerns there? Let's keep going here. Yes, Councilmember Luna.
Oh, I was going to go to the next item.
Okay, next item, thank you. And that would be 10C.
Mrs. Alonka, there were some issues from a community member relative to parking, and so I wanted to know if Mr. Lake would speak to that.
Oh, wonderful. If you'll let us know who you are for our viewing audience.
Mayor, council members, my name is Sean Lake, 1744 South Val Vista Drive, Mesa, Arizona. This is my office. I also live here. I apologize, my neck's a little stiff. Never get into a wrestling match with your son who's a Toro football player, it just never ends well. The question related to parking on this site, we have designed this site, there are approximately 430 units, and we have designed the site with 515 guest parking spaces. So we believe that there are more than enough, an exhibit was provided and shown at Planning Commission, provided to the staff, and we can certainly show it either this, this morning or on Monday, showing where those parking spaces are located and how they're accommodated. And those don't interfere with, with trash pickup. So those have been located in areas so that when the trash cans are out, you can still park and pick up trash at the same time. So we feel we've more than accommodated that.
I also had a question on public safety, whether police and fire have, have access to that community, is that going to be an issue in terms of the roads and?
Mayor, council members, we don't believe so. We have two access points off of Higley, one access point off of Brown, and one access point off of McClellan going west. And so, kind of in all four corners of the property, we have access points off of that property.
We actually met with fire yesterday, the fire marshal, to talk about access, and he was fine with it. I also know that the resident collected a number of signatures. Was there a legal protest filed against this development, as far as you're concerned?
Gordon can help me out here, but my understanding is the intent was not to file a legal protest, they just wanted to make a statement.
The petition, our understanding was it was not intended to be a formal legal protest, but intended basically to give an opinion to council that there were residents that were concerned about the density of the project and were, their thought was that the density might be somewhat lower.
And I can also say, we took a look at the signatures and.
Correct.
Okay, I was going to say, unless he concluded something differently, they don't meet the legal requirements under state law for a legal protest. Also communicated that to the individual who turned in the signature, and I believe she agrees, hey, we just wanted to make sure the council was aware that we object to the density.
Right. The requirement under state law is that the area of the property within 150 feet, the owners would have to rep, the owners opposing that would have to represent 20% of that area on one side. We took a look at that, the actual owners who signed the petition amounted to 18%. There were two other people who signed who were, we believe, are renters. If they had been owners, it would have thrown it in over to 22%. But again, we don't believe that the petition was intended to be a legal protest that met the requirements under state statute.
Okay, question, Mr. Councilmember Richards.
The density of the adjacent properties around the neighborhood that's struggling compared to the one going in?
It's the standard RS7 density, there is RS6, RS7, and RSL in the proposed project. It's, I believe roughly, it's about three, I believe, next door, I believe this is fairly close to that, about a half, maybe.
Yeah. Our project overall is a density of around 5.4, 5.5. In the surrounding area, it's very similar density. To the, to the west is around that four, to the south is around 4.85. Over in Alta Mesa, there's, I mean, that's a lot of different projects in Alta Mesa, but Alta Mesa has projects that are at seven units to the acre, some are at 18, some are at 9.7 units to the acre, some are 11 units to the acre, some are lower at, you know, three units to the acre. And so we believe it's very compatible and consistent with the area as far as density goes.
So which is the neighbor that's having a hard time with 5.4 units an acre? Is it the one to the west?
There is, there is a neighbor that I have spoken to that lives to the, in Alta Mesa, over in a townhome project over there, that is concerned about the density that I have spoken with.
Yeah, the, where the, and as Mr. Lake was alluding to, there are several projects over there, and the densities range anywhere from three on up to seven, eight. And there are apartment projects further to the north that are in the 12 to 15 range.
Okay. You've got all your questions answered? So hopefully, we'll have someone at the fire department there Monday to speak to any concerns, can reaffirm what they've already said, and we'll have plenty of staff there. And so are we going to leave it, it looks like it's off consent, right? So we should be ready to go? Thank you. Thank you.
And as a reminder, there's a general plan minor amendment that goes along with it.
That goes with it. Right. Okay. No other questions on that one? Looks like we're going through 11A through 11C. Any further items there? 12, 12A through, let's see, down through 12B. Yes, please, Councilwoman.
Although I've never met the owner of the property where the dispensary could potentially go, I understand that they may be in the audience, I wondered if they could come up and speak about the project?
Sure.
If they're interested.
We have someone there, maybe a spokesperson? Come on up. Yes, please. If you'll let us know who you are, your address, and probably, you know, just a few minutes here to share.
Okay, my name's Judy Gady, I'm the owner of the property at 6350 East Main Street in Mesa. I've been a resident here for, since 69 in Mesa, and I own the shopping center that had burned to the ground two years ago. I've owned it since 1971. And I had, it was full when it burned, it was my source of income, and I have not rented a space. There's, we did a building, but there's so much commercial property out there that I have not been able to rent a space. And I truly believe I was a good neighbor and can still be a good neighbor.
Okay. Well, it's nice to meet you. We've had a lot of input on this issue, and I know we're going to address it Monday.
Yes.
If you'll please, before you leave, get with our city clerk and fill out a blue card, and we'll have your information on file. And we'll look forward to hearing from you Monday, I presume you'll be there?
Yes.
And we'll look at all sides of this. It's definitely getting down to decision time, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for taking the time this morning to come visit and let us know.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Just a question, I think on 12A and 12B, we have different addresses, and we just need to get that corrected?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Kavanaugh, we just caught that, and we're going to have to get that changed to correct it. It's supposed to be 6350, I believe. And I believe there's also supposed to be a general, minor general plan amendment with this one. So you may see that on the agenda, but we'll confirm with, with planning and with.
So whatever the addresses are correct, you'll get them consistent?
We'll make sure it's consistent.
Yeah, good catch.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, if there's no other items there, that'll take care of the agenda for Monday. Okay, next item, hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the proposed improvements to the terms and conditions relating to customer deposits on the sale of utilities. Good morning.
Good morning.
I think we have a new winner from PowerPoint.
Great.
Two active slides.
Sure. Let us know who you are and.
They get a bonus.
There you go.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, my name is Tim Meyer, I'm currently serving in the executive manager program, and with me is Carolyn Montiel, who is serving with, or is replacing me while I'm on that program, so.
Wonderful.
Yes, we're very happy to be here this morning to talk to you about the proposed changes to the terms and conditions. We think they're very positive, and we wanted to kind of run through those in two slides.
One of our first proposed changes is to increase the amount of time when a customer of record is deceased, if we're notified by an unauthorized person who's possibly not on the account. Typically, what we currently do is we send a letter to the property address, and we give the person who should assume responsibility 14 days to notify us and assume responsibility. We want to increase that to 30 days, so that we're not turning off service. We're giving them more time to come in and take care of the account and get it properly handled.
Appreciate that.
The second bullet point we have is currently, we require a deposit on all accounts that don't have history within the last 36 months with the city. We are wanting to propose to waive a deposit if we run a credit report from a credit bureau. We currently use Equifax, and we would like to receive a score back in order to determine if we can waive that deposit. We have had a lot of requests regarding this, and it would be more customer-friendly if we could, you know, possibly assist the customers this way.
Councilwoman Benelli.
I, or can you divulge, I guess, what the range of the score might be that would be acceptable?
We will have to submit a letter to the customer once the report has been ran, so they will receive a letter stating if it was approved. Go ahead.
Do you have a, is there a threshold number on the score?
Yes. There is, there is a number, an industry standard number that we'll be using.
It's basically going to run right along the lines of qualifying for a car or something like that, so it's going to be, it's going to be something that's very attainable.
It's a standard.
It's a standard industry number.
Exactly. And I only ask because I'm underwritten loans before, so I'm familiar with this, but I understand that, that gives me a big clue.
Okay. You're welcome. Currently, we will go back only 18 months and look within our utility system to see if a customer who's applying for services had utilities with us in the last 18 months. We want to increase that to 24. We're finding we have a lot of customers that are calling and they've had service, they're just missing it, the 18 months, in order for us to waive the deposit and check their prior history with us. So we want to increase that to the 24 months. We're currently holding deposits on accounts that we've required from customers 36 months, we want to reduce that to 24 also.
Nice.
We are, would like to automate where the deposits are automatically refunded. Currently, the customers have to call us and request that, we will hold it until we receive a call, we want to make that automated now after, after the 24 months.
And it'll actually be a credit to the account, so they'll actually see the credit right on their bill automatically, which will be a great service to them, so they'll just be automatic flow into it.
Very nice. Councilwoman Benelli.
So would, would they also be able to get the refund, not as a credit, just as a straight refund?
No, we're going to do strictly as a credit, the only time we would do the refund is if the account is going to be closed. So obviously, if there's no account to apply it to, then we're going to go ahead and go that route, so it'll, it'll actually flow right into their account.
Currently, when a customer does discontinue services with us, they may expect a refund check, but if they've made their last payment with a credit card, we're going to credit check, but if they've made their last payment with the, a credit card, we're going to credit the credit card back. Um, so this is more to detail to the customers how their refund will be received on a final bill. The, the remainder of the requests we have are just, uh, clarifying verbiage.
Okay.
For our utility customers.
Well, it seems very customer-friendly.
Yes.
We always appreciate that.
Yes, and we, we've paid attention to the economy getting better and so forth, and we wanna try to take, back in two thousand eight and two thousand ten, we actually restricted or, or requested some restrictions to the credit policy because of the economy. And we're seeing some good, good, good positive results now. So we feel that we can relax a little bit and get, and get back to some nor, uh, more, more customer-friendly, and, and we still feel that we'll be adequately, uh, covered in our deposits.
Very nice. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I, uh, support the changes that you're making because, uh, well, for, one, it's the right thing to do, but two, it will reduce the number of calls to council offices. Thank you.
And us as well.
Right. Any other comments? Well, thank you. Thank you for being so responsive. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item, two B, is appointments to boards and committees. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. Our next item is, uh, information pertaining to current job order contracting. So they're gonna take care of the Big Falcon Field Water Tank, huh? Is that on the exterior or interior? That would be the exterior.
Interior.
Right.
And I think we've provided the council the new design logos we're gonna put on there with the, uh, City of Mesa and the Falcons. So it should, it'll give it a, an iconic view coming in there. So, um, we'll, we can include that again this week if you'd like. And then, uh, what the expense on this really significantly is, um, lead-based paint that we have to address. And that's when, so while we're up there, we're gonna clean that off, and then when we repaint it, we're gonna kick it up a notch, I guess, so.
Excellent. Very nice. Uh, no other questions on that item? Okay, uh, hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I have two to report on. On Saturday, I, uh, welcomed the participants in the annual Sister Cities, Mesa Sister Cities Golf Tournament, and had a great participation there. It's the biggest fundraiser for, uh, that program, which, uh, helps in large part support the student exchange program, uh, of Sister Cities. This summer, there'll be exchange students both from Canada and Mexico joining with students here in Mesa for several weeks of activities that that program helps to underwrite. And so it was, uh, it was a very nice event with a lot of volunteers, uh, from the community coming together to help support that program. Uh, last night, I spoke at the graduation of, uh, Mesa Police Academy, the Citizen Police Academy, class number fifty-three. Think about it, that program started in nineteen ninety-one, and we really have hundreds of residents have gone through that program. And it's, uh, fairly unique among cities to have programs like this. And, uh, it was, again, the class is always is a wide diversity of, of ages and backgrounds. And, uh, those people, I think, become great ambassadors for the police department and public safety throughout the community. And, uh, while I was there, I learned that our new, uh, Senior Citizen Police Academy is going very well, and good response from the community. And, and again, as another innovation, I understand the police department is exploring the idea of having a youth academy to, in the, in the summer with some sort of program like that. And so I wanna commend, uh, Mesa Police Department for continuing and expanding these innovative programs. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I had the opportunity to represent the city at the, uh, Mesa Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner, went along with Councilmember Luna. Um, it was a great event, and congratulations to all the winners and all the businesses in our community.
Very nice. Councilmember Luna?
Uh, we had a, a check-in meeting over at Falcon Field, and there was, uh, this past Thursday, we had, uh, probably around a hundred people in attendance. So it was well-attended. It was a very positive meeting, and I'm, I'm, I'm having a real good feeling that we're headed in the right direction, uh, relative to some issues that are, that are happening over there. So, uh, that was a great meeting. We also had a Luna landing Friday with, uh, and our guest was Bill Jevgeniak and Mark Kersberg, and they talked about some activities in District Five. And thanks to my assistant, Charlotte, back there, uh, for coordinating that effort. So that worked out real well. Um, let's see. And, uh, I also wanted to alert you that May seventh, we're working on a project over at Thingspot. We're going to try, we're gonna bring actually a storyteller, his name is Conrad Storad, who's going to read a story from Thingspot to some of our elementary schools in Mesa, uh, at Eisenhower and at Summit Academy. It's an interactive video presentation, so we're really excited about that because it, it highlights the innovation over at Thingspot as well as being able to partner with Mesa Public Schools. So I'm really excited about that. That'll be May seventh at eight-thirty.
Nice, nice. Others? I know we, uh, yes, Councilwoman Benelli?
I got to attend my first event as a council member. It was the, um, Celebrate Mesa Event at Pioneer Park. And I just have to tell this little tidbit. I walked up to the event, and, um, our city manager was in line for the, um, zip line.
Uh, good. I think he likes those.
I don't think he does.
Yeah.
I'm not telling.
Oh. Yeah. How did the throwing t-shirts go?
She is good.
Yeah?
She's good.
Got an arm, huh?
She's got an arm.
Nice, nice. And we hear that...
Okay, we won't go there.
Yeah. And Pioneer Park packed full of people, right? Uh, that's amazing to see all the people that turn out to these events. Uh, so, great. Uh, any other items? No? Uh, okay, Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind, um, the community, we've been hosting, um, uh, three community conversations on inclusion and diversity. Uh, the final, um, conversation will be on Tuesday, May sixth, from six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM at the Fiesta Fountains Conference Center. Um, that's at thirteen sixteen South Longmore, Suite one oh two. So invite the community out for that. Um, and the day before that, of course, we'll have our next council meeting, um, Monday, May fifth. And then also, Mayor, if I could, I just want to say thank you to Chuck Odom. This is his last day.
That's true.
Working for the City of Mesa. I wanna thank him for all his service to the city. He's been a big part of the budget discussions and the city's finances for many years. So we just appreciate his service.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's very nice. Thank you.
We're having a council meeting on Cinco de Mayo. Did we really make this through?
All right.
I checked.
Yeah. Okay. Um, well, if there's no other items, uh, we'll go ahead. A motion for adjournment? Second? All in favor? Aye.